I call the second regular session of the Seventeenth Congress to order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by Deputy Speaker Maylin Albano of the Second District of Davao City.
As we start the second regular session of this Seventeenth Congress, we pray: Amahan nga makikugmaon, nagabuhad sa kinatibukan. Kami isip sa kanasod, naghahangyo diha kanimo upag amuma. Nangamuyo og nagadayg kami kanimo, sa makanunayong grasya nga gehatag ni mo kanamo. Mangayo kami og pasailo sa among mga kakulangan diha kanimo, og sa among isigkaingon. Nagapasalamat kami kanimo amahan, sa paghatag sa nasod Pilipinas og giya, sa mga maanindo't og pagkaadunahan ni ini sa panginabuhian. Ihatag ang kalinaw sa among nasod, og katungayan. Itugyan namo kanimo ang mga mamumuno sa among nasod, ang among presidente, brisi presidente, mga senador, mga kongresista, og ang tanang nanrabaho sa gobyerno. Hinaot nga kanunay ang saktong buluhaton og panghuna-huna ang mapatig babaw sa ilang kasing-kasing. Kinigtanan among giampok kanimo langit noong amahan. We also lift up our brothers and sisters in Mindanao. May the victory of peace come upon them so that justice and love may reign in their place. Amen.
The Chair would like to address this august chamber. Please take your seats. It has been a year since we began our journey as the Seventeenth Congress of the Philippines. With the first session now adjourned, and as we begin the second session, let us look back at the year that has passed. The May 2016 elections was one of the most partisan in the history of our nation. In spite of this, we rolled up our sleeves and went to work. Our performance speaks for itself. For our first session, we passed on third reading 210 legislative measures. Given that we had 97 session days, that's an average of two bills on third reading for every session day. Our concrete efforts to provide our people with better chances at life is undeniable. While variables beyond our control have marked our first session with unprecedented challenges, we did not waver or falter. We did our job. As a matter of fact, for all the 97 session days of our first session, we had a corrum. This is unheard of. Let us thank Majority Leader Rodolfo Fariñas for his decisiveness and the House members for their cooperation regarding this matter. Our collective commitment to discipline also made possible landmark legislative feats. We passed the 27 budget in record time. Credit goes to Representative Carlo Nogales for leading for leading the charge in tackling the budget. We have also succeeded in steering the return of the death penalty for certain heinous crimes. Let us recognize the hard work of Representative Reynaldo Umali for making this possible. The House has also passed on third reading the tax reform bill. For the longest time, a comprehensive reform of our tax laws was considered beyond the reach of reality. That remained true until Representative Daquila Kua stepped into the fight. Let us thank him for safely navigating the tax reform bill through the rough seas of Congress. Our legislative task, however, cannot be done alone. It is accomplished through partnership, not only amongst ourselves, but also in tandem with our colleagues at the Senate of the Philippines, whom we meet with once every beginning of the month. This has laid the solid ground for a more effective and efficient inter-chamber operational compatibility. Through a spirited but cordial exchange, we have agreed upon the common legislative agenda of Congress. There are 40 national important items on that list. Our collective hard work paid off, as shown by what we were able to accomplish as we reached the legislative finish line during the month of May of this year. The House and the Senate chose 14 measures from the common legislative agenda for passage on third reading before session ended. On the part of the House of Representatives, we delivered 11 of the 14 bills. The remaining three bills are making substantial progress through the legislative process here in our chamber. Of the 14 nationally important measures, the House and the Senate successfully passed six bills, which are now at the doorstep of becoming laws. All that is required now is the signature of the President. There are landmark reforms, some long overdue, and common sense gears to the everyday pain points of life. To start off with the enactment of RA 10927, amending the anti-money laundering act to cover casino transactions, we have created an additional safeguard against the threats posed by those who perpetrated the Bangladesh Bank case and laid bare the vulnerabilities of our banking systems. Thanks to the approval of both chambers of Congress, several bills are also now submitted to the President for his signature. These bills have made tertiary education more accessible, increased interconnectedness of our people through free internet in public places, updated the backwardness of the fines applicable in the revised penal code, to be more in keeping with today's realities, and strengthened emergency healthcare services, especially for indigent patients. Let us recognize Representative An Hofer, Representative Victoria, Representative Reynaldo Umali, Representative Ben Evardone, and Representative Angelina Tan for making sure that these bills pass on third reading here in our chamber. We have also fixed certain everyday problems that bring inconvenience to our people. Now the validity of a driver's license is five years, and should a driver comply with reasonable conditions, it can even be as long as 10 years. The same is true for the validity of passports. It can be valid for as long as a decade or 10 years. We extend our appreciation to Representative Cesar Sarmiento and Representative Lina Belruth Villarica for their dedication to the cause. We were able to do all of this in just one session. Indeed, we have reason to celebrate. But let us temper our joys with a sobering thought that we still have plenty of challenges left to face. We are remaining items, there are remaining items in the common legislative agenda of the House and the Senate. There is also the presidential legislative agenda. And of course, we all have advocacies we hold close to our hearts, which we wish to translate into law. Our first session aimed at getting the basics right, without which we end up hubristically building our nation on shifting sands. Getting the basics right is like finding our granite upon which we can build a sturdy nation, our home, designed and capable of withstanding the test of time. This principle must be kept in mind as we move forward to our second session. Let us not only aim for landmark legislations, grand in scope, but also seek to address concerns that involve the basic fundamental unit of our society, the family. Admittedly, there is a sad reality about some marriages. We do not always get it right the first time around. Unfortunately, the present system practically coerces married persons to remain with each other even if the relationship is beyond repair and has caused, and continues to cause harm to the well-being of the husband, the wife, and worse, the children involved. We have to change this. I thank Representative Pia Cayetano for her commitment to file a bill that will allow for the dissolution of the marriage without the need for an extensively adversarial system. Married persons can mutually agree to end their marriage subject to the approval of the court. One of the conditions which must be complied with is an agreed-upon un-executable framework to provide for the care and support of their children. Moreover, previously married persons can remain friends and better parents despite their differences, since we no longer have to sling mud at each other in front of a judge just to convince the magistrate that their marriage should be declared void or voided. We must also be considerate of the fact that marriage may not be for everyone. Presently, it even excludes certain groups of people from its fold. Let us tackle this issue head-on. I will file a bill that will legally recognize and protect civil partnerships. I thank Representative Geraldine Roman for her inputs regarding this legislative measure. Our citizens should not be excluded from society just because of the person they love. They must also be treated with equality before the law. I support Representative Roman's fight against discrimination in our society. Let us not stop there. Children, through no fault of theirs, have been stigmatized by society for being born outside of a valid marriage. It is time to end the unequal treatment of legitimate and illegitimate children. We can start the process by equalizing the legitimists that children receive regardless of whether or not they were born within or outside wedlock. This is an issue of justice and fairness. I hope, I hope that you support it as well. Beyond the family, we also have to embark upon the great reorganization of the government bureaucracy. The regulatory framework is chaotic, full of overlaps, conflicts of interest, and at times, there is no clear central regulatory body. Let's start off with PAGCOR. It does not make sense for it to regulate and operate. An entity that has this power runs the risk of dealing itself a favorable hand while undercutting others. We should also look into how land transportation, railways, airports, and seaports are organized and regulated. Often, a review of said areas of public interest would show how chaotic the regulatory frameworks are. Let us begin by merging the LTO and the LTFRB into the Land Transportation Authority. Moving forward, our railways must be regulated by a new body, the Philippine Railways Authority, which sets the uniform standards and fares for all railways operating here in the Philippines. The same holds true for airports. We must create the Philippine Airports Authority, since the different airports act autonomously without sufficient oversight and agree upon standards, given that many have their own charters. Let us work closely with Representative Cesar Sarmiento to make this possible. Now, let us complete the reorganization by adding a safeguard mechanism that will make certain that the public's interest will always be protected. We must require that operators of casinos, public transportation, as well as mining companies, secure a legislative franchise from Congress prior to their operations. This will make certain that their applications are scrutinized deeply. Only the deserving will be allowed to operate. I have met with Representative Franz Alvarez regarding this matter, and I have full confidence in his ability to shepherd these bills through the legislative process. Last but not the least, we have to concentrate our efforts in passing two legislative measures that hold the key to lasting peace and prosperity for our country. First, the Bangsa Moro Basic Law draft has been submitted to the President and will soon be on its way into our chambers. This will be the basis for creating a homeland for our Bangsa Moro brothers and sisters. Second, we have to exert additional effort in paving the way for the shift from a unitary to a federal form of government. This will address the structural defects that have hampered our national strategy in pursuit of peace, prosperity, and progress. Let us recognize Representative Roger Mercado's contribution in pushing forward with this legislative agenda. Evidently, we have our plates full for the rest of the second session. I am certain we can accomplish the task ahead of us. And though I cannot mention everyone due to time constraints, I'd like to thank all of you for making our first session a success. You know who you are. Thank you. As we embark upon our second session, let us remember for whom we legislate for. And this is for the generations that will come after our own. The history of our nation is like a book. Each generation is allowed to write a chapter. And when we pass on the torch to those who will inherit what we leave behind, I wonder what the younger generations will speak of when they remember us and our legacy. On my part, I simply want to be remembered as the speaker of the people who listened to and acted upon the often unheard cries and complaints of the marginalized and voiceless members of our society. Together, let us empower the disempowered. I had recently found out that the youngest staff here in the House of Representatives works for my office. Like many from her generation, she is both bright and promising. As a matter of fact, she graduated cum laude from the oldest university in Asia. With all the opportunities presented to her, she nonetheless chose the difficult life of public service. A life we in this chamber are all too familiar with. However, unlike many of us, who will soon reach the twilight of our lives, she has more time. What changes and challenges will her generation meet and overcome? Will her generation still be full of Filipinos who will have to leave their families to pursue greener pastures abroad? Or will her generation, building upon what we legislators of today have accomplished, finally say to our OFWs abroad, "Uwi na tayo." Will her generation still have to deal with fighting for elusive peace and missing out on progress and development should we fail to pass the Bangsa Moro Basic Law? And in addition to that, fail to shift our form of government from unitary to federal? Or will her generation reap the dividends of our efforts to end the insurgencies? Will our children still have to fight? Or can they finally live their lives in peace and happiness? In this endless journey we call nation-building, let us make sure that we write our chapter well so that those who will come after us may build upon what we have secured. Let us keep this in mind as we begin our second session. Thank you and may God bless the Philippines. The Secretary-General will now call the role of members of the House of Representatives elected from legislative districts apportioned among the provinces, cities, and municipalities, and party list organizations.
Role call of members elected from the legislative district apportioned among the provinces, cities, and municipalities, and party list organizations. And National Capital Region from Caloacan City, First District, Honorable Dale Along R. Malapitan. Second District, Honorable Edgar R. Erice. From Makati City, First District, Honorable Manuel Monsur T. Del Rosario III. Second District, Honorable Luis Jose Angel N. Campos Jr. Malabon City, Lone District, Honorable Federico Ricky S. Andoval II. From Mandaluyong City, Lone District, Honorable Alexandria P. Gonzalez. From the city of Manila, First District, Honorable Manuel Luis T. Lopez. From Second District, Honorable Carlo B. Lopez. From Third District, Honorable John Marvin Yul Serbo C. Nieto. From the Fourth District, Honorable Edward Beraperes Maceda. From the Fifth District, Honorable Crystal L. Bagatzing. Sixth District, Honorable Rosenda Ann Ocampo. From Marikina City, First District, Honorable Bayani F. Fernando. From Second District, Honorable Romero Miro S. Kimbo. From Montenlupa City, Lone District, Honorable Rosano Rufino B. Beazon. From Nabota City, Lone District, Honorable Tobias Toby M. Tiano. From Paranyaki City, First District, Honorable Eric L. Olivares. From Second District, Honorable Gus S. Tambunting. From Pasay City, Lone District, Honorable Emi G. Calixto Robiano. From Pasig City, Lone District, Honorable Richard C. Eusebio. Quezon City, First District, Honorable Vincent Bingbong P. Crisologo. From the Second District, Honorable Winston Winnie Castelo. From Third District, Honorable George Bolet Banal. From the Fourth District, Honorable Feliciano Belmonte Jr. From the Fifth District, Honorable Alfred D. Vargas. From the Sixth District, Honorable Jose Christopher Y. Belmonte. San Juan City, Lone District, Honorable Ronaldo B. Samora. Taguig City, Pateros, from First District, Honorable Arnold M. Ceraffica. From Second District, Honorable Pia S. Cayetano. From Valenzuela City, First District, Honorable Wes Gachalian. From Second District, Honorable Eric M. Martinez. From Region 1, Ilocos. Ilocos Norte with the city of Plawag, First District, Honorable Rodolfo C. Fariñas. Second District, Honorable Imelda R. Marcos. From Ilocos Sur with the cities of Bigan and Candon, First District, Honorable Diograsias Victor D. B. B. Sabelliano. From Ilocos Sur with the cities of Bigan and Candon, First District, Honorable Diograsias Victor D.B. B. Sabelliano. Second District, Honorable Eric D. Sinzon. La Unión, First District, Honorable Pablo C. Ortega. Second District, Honorable Sandra Y. Ericuel M.D. Pangasinan, First District, Honorable Jesús Boyhep Celeste. Second District, Honorable Leopoldo N. Batawil. From Third District, Honorable Rosemary Baby J. Arenas. From Fourth District, Honorable Christopher Beraperes de Venecia. From the Fifth District, Honorable Amanda T. Espino Jr. From Sixth District, Honorable Marlin L. Premicias Agavas. Region 2, Cagayan Valley, from Batanes, Lone District, Honorable Henedina R. Abad. From Cagayan, First District, Honorable Ramón C. Nolasco. Second District, Honorable Baby Aline Vargas Alfonso. From the Third District, Honorable Randolph S. Ting. From Isabela, First District, Honorable Rodolfo T. Albano III. Second District, Honorable Ana Cristina Sikian Go. From Third District, Honorable Napoleón S. D. Fourth District, Honorable Maria Lourdes R. Agabao. From Nevaixija, Lone District, and Nueva Biscaya, Lone District, Honorable Luisa Lloren Cuarezma. From Quirino, Lone District, Honorable Dakina Dakila Carlo I. Kuah. Region 3, Central Luzon, from Aurora, Lone District, Honorable Beliaflor J. Angara Castillo. From Bataan, First District, Honorable Geraldine B. Roman. Second District, Honorable Jose Enrique Jovet S. García III. From Bulacan, First District, Honorable Jose Antonio Cuya Jonathan R. C. Alvarado. Second District, Honorable Gabini Apple C. Pancho. From Third District, Honorable Lorna C. Silberio. From the Fourth District, Honorable Linavel Ruth R. Villarica. San Jose del Monte City, Lone District, Honorable Torida Rida P. Robas. From Nevaixija, First District, Honorable Estrelita B. Swan Sing. Second District, Honorable Michaela S. Biolago. Third District, Honorable Rosana Ria Bergara. Fourth District, Honorable Magnolia C. Antonino. From Pampanga, First District, Honorable Carmelo John B. Lasatin II. Second District, Honorable Gloria Mahapagal Arroyo. Third District, Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Juan Pablo Rimpi P. Bondok. Tarlac, First District, Honorable Carlos O. Coanco. From the Second District, Honorable Victor A. Yap. Third District, Honorable Noel L. Villanueva. From Sambales, First District, Honorable Jeffrey D. Konghun. Second District, Honorable Cheryl P. Deloso Montalia. Region 4, A. Calabarzon, from Tipolo City, First District, Honorable Cristina Chiki Rova Puno. Second District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop. Batangas with Tanawan City, First District, Honorable Elinita Milagros Aileen Ermita Buahin. Second District, Honorable Reneo Rani I. Abu. Third District, Honorable Maria Teresa B. Coliantes. Fourth District, Honorable Leanda B. Bolilia. Fifth District, Batangas City, Honorable Mario Vittorio Marbi A. Mariño. Sixth District, Lipa City, Honorable Vilma Santos Recto. Cabite with Cabite, Tres Madres, and Tagaita Cities. First District, Honorable Francis Gerald A. Abaya. Second District, Honorable Strike B. Rebilla. Third District, Honorable Alex A.A.L. Advincula. Fourth District, Honorable Jennifer Austria Barsaga. Fifth District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola. Sixth District, Honorable Luis John John A. Ferrer IV. Seventh District, Honorable Abraham Bumble N. Tolentino. Laguna, First District, Honorable Arlin B. Arcillas. Second District, Honorable Joquin M. Chipeco Jr. Third District, Honorable Saul Aragonés. Fourth District, Honorable Benjamin C. Agarrao Jr. Biñan City, Lone District, Honorable Marlin B. Alonte. Quezon with the city of Lucena, from First District, Honorable Ana Katrina M. Enverga. Second District, Honorable Vicente Culit J. Akala. Third District, Honorable Danilo I. Suárez. Fourth District, Honorable Angelina Helen D. Eltan M.D. Rizal, First District, Honorable Michael John R. Duabit. Second District, Honorable Isidro S. Rodriguez. Region 4 B., Mi Maropa, from Marin Duque, Lone District, Honorable Lord Alan J.Q. Velasco. Occidental Mindoro, Lone District, Honorable Joseph P. Ramirez Sato. Oriental Mindoro with the city of Calapan, First District, Honorable Doi C. V. Umalí. Apalawan with the city of Puerto Princesa, First District, Honorable Franz E. Álvarez. Second District, Honorable Frederick Eric F. Abueg. Third District, Honorable Hill Cabarangay P. Acosta. From Romblón, Lone District, Honorable Emmanuel F. Madrona. Region 5, Bicaya Jr. Second District, Honorable Louis Raymond F. Villafuerte Jr. Third District, Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Arnulpo P. Fuentebelia. And Fifth District, Honorable Salvio B. Fortuno. From Catanduanes, Lone District, Honorable César B. Sarmiento. From Masbate with the city of Masbate, First District, Honorable María Vida Espinoza Bravo. Second District, Honorable Elisa Olga T. Co. Third District, Honorable Scott Davis S. Lanete M.D. From Sorcegon with the city of Sorcegon, First District, Honorable Evelina G. Escudero. Second District, Honorable Diograsias B. Ramos Jr. From Region 6, Western Visayas, from Aclan, Lone District, Honorable Carlito S. Marquez. From Antique, Lone District, Honorable Paulo Everardo S. Javier. From Capis with the city of Prohas, First District, Honorable Manuel A. Billiones. From Second District, Honorable Fredenil Fred H. Castro. From Gimarás, Lone District, Honorable María Lucille Elnaba M.D. From Iloilo with the city of Pasí, First District, Honorable Oscar Richard S. Garín Jr. Second District, Honorable Arcadio H. Goriseta. Third District, Honorable Arthur R. Defensor Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Perhanel G. Birón M.D. Fifth District, Honorable Raúl Boboy C. Tupas. Iloilo City, Lone District, Honorable Jerry P. Treñas. Region 7, Central Visayas, Bohol with the city of Tacbilaran, First District, Honorable Lele L. Relámpagos. Second District, Honorable Erigo Aristotel C. Aumentado. Third District, Honorable Arthur C. Yap. Cebu, First District, Honorable Gerald Anthony Samsam B. Gulyas Jr. Second District, Honorable Wilfredo S. Caminero. Third District, Honorable Gwendolin F. García. Fourth District, Honorable Benhar L. Salim Bangon. Fifth District, Honorable Ramón Red H. Dorano VI. Sixth District, Honorable Jonas C. Cortés. Seventh District, Honorable Peter John D. Calderón. Cebu City, First District, Honorable Raúl V. Delmar. Second District, Honorable Rodrigo A. Abelianosa. Lapulapu City, Lone District, Honorable Eileen C. Radaza. From Siquijor, Lone District, Honorable Ramón B. A. Rab Rocamora. Region 8, Eastern Visayas, from Biliran, Lone District, Honorable Rogelio J. Espina M.D. Eastern Samar, Lone District, Honorable Ben P. Ebardoni. From Leyte, First District, Honorable Yeda Marie K. Romualdes. From Second District, Honorable Henry C. Ong. Third District, Honorable Vicente Ching S. I. Beloso. Fourth District, Honorable Lucy T. Gómez. Fifth District, Honorable Jose Carlos L. Carri. From Northern Samar, First District, Honorable Raúl A. Dasa. From Second District, Honorable Edwin C. Ong. From Samar, First District, Honorable Edgar Mary S. Sarmiento. From Second District, Honorable Milagrosa Mila T. Tan. Southern Leyte, Lone District, Honorable Roger G. Mercado. From Region 9, San Buanga Peninsula, San Buanga City, First District, Honorable Celso L. La Brigat. Second District, Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe. San Buanga del Norte, First District, Honorable Seth Frederick P. Halosjos. From Second District, Honorable Lona G. Labad Labad. Third District, Honorable Isagani S. Amatong. From San Buanga del Sur, First District, Honorable Divina Grace C. Yu. From Second District, Honorable Aurora Enerio Cerriles. From San Buanga Cibugay, First District, Honorable Wilter Sharkey W. Palma II. Second District, Honorable Anne K. Hopper. Region 10, Northern Mindanao, Bukidnon with Malay Balay and Balensia Cities, from the First District, Honorable Maria Lourdes Acosta Alba. Second District, Honorable Prorensuti Flores Jr. M.D. Third District, Honorable Manuel F. Subiri. Fourth District, Honorable Rogelio Neil P. Roque. Cagayan de Oro City, First District, Honorable Rolando Clarex A. Uy. From Second District, Honorable Maximo B. Rodríguez Jr. From Camiggin, Lone District, Honorable Xavier Jesús D. Romualdo. From Iligan City, Lone District, Honorable Frederick W. Xiao. From Lanau del Norte, First District, Honorable Muhammad Khalid Q. Dimaporo. Second District, Honorable Abdullah D. Dimaporo. Misamis Occidental, First District, Honorable George T. Almonte. Second District, Honorable Henry S. Waminal. Misamis Oriental, First District, Honorable Peter Senor Pedro M. Unavia. Second District, Honorable Juliet T. Uy. Region 11, Davao Region, from Postela Bali, First District, Honorable Maria Carmen S. Zamora. Second District, Honorable Ruel Peter S. Gonzaga. From Davao City, First District, Honorable Carlo Alexei B. Nograles. Second District, Honorable Maylin J. García Albano. Third District, Honorable Alberto T. Ungam. From Davao del Norte, First District, Honorable Pantallón D. Álvarez. Second District, Honorable Antonio R. Prorendo Jr. Davao del Sur, Lone District, Honorable Mercedes D.D. C. Cagas. Davao Occidental, Lone District, Honorable Lorna P. Bautista Bandigan. Davao Oriental, First District, Honorable Corazon T. Núñez Malanyaon. Second District, Honorable Jose Mayo Z. Almario. From Region 12, Socsergen, North Catabato with the city of Kidapawan, First District, Honorable Jesús Nonato Saqdalan. Second District, Honorable Nancy A. Katamco. Third District, Honorable Jose Ping Ping A. Tejada. Sarangani, Lone District, Honorable Rogelio Ruel D. Paquiao. South Catabato, First District, Honorable Pedro B. Acharon Jr. Second District, Honorable Ferdinand L. Hernández. Sultan Cudarat, First District, Honorable Sojarto T. Magudadatu. Second District, Honorable Rasyo P. Swan Sing Jr. Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Lanau del Sur, First District, Honorable Anzarudin A.M.A. Adiyong. Second District, Honorable Mauyag Jun P. Papandayan Jr. First, Magindanao and Catabato City, First District, Honorable Bay Sandra Sin Suat A. Semah. Second District, Honorable Sajid G. Magudadatu. From Sulu, Second District, Honorable Munir M. Arbison. Tawi Tawi, Lone District, Honorable Ruby M. Sahali. From the Cordillera Administrative Region, Abra, Lone District, Honorable Joseph Santoninho B. Bernos. From Apayao, Lone District, Honorable Eleanor C. Bulut Begtang. From Baguio City, Lone District, Honorable Mark O. Go. From Benguet, Lone District, Honorable Ronald M. Casalan. Ifugao, Lone District, Honorable Teddy Broner Bagilat Jr. From Calinga, Lone District, Honorable Allen Jesse C. Mangawang. Caraga Region, Agusan del Norte, First District, Honorable Lawrence H. Fortun. Second District, Honorable Earth John Ping M. Amante. Agusan del Sur with the city of Bayugan, First District, Honorable Maria Valentina G. Plaza. Second District, Honorable Evelyn P. Meliana. Dinaga, Thailand, Lone District, Honorable Kaka J. Bagao. Surigao del Norte, First District, Honorable Francisco Jose F. Matugas II. Second District, Honorable Robert Ace S. Barber. Surigao del Sur, First District, Honorable Prospero A. Pichai Jr. Second District, Honorable Johnny T. Pimentel. Negroes Island Region, Negroes Occidental with the city of San Carlos, Cadiz, Bago, Nakarlotas, Silay, Kabankalan, Sagay, Victorias, Escalante, Sipalay, and Himamaylan, First District, Honorable Melacio J. Yap Jr. Second District, Honorable Leo Rafael M. Cueba. Third District, Honorable Alfredo Albi B. Benitez. Fourth District, Honorable Juliet Marie D. Ferrer. Fifth District, Honorable Alejandro Y. Mirasol. Sixth District, Honorable Mercedes K. Álvarez. Bacolod City, Lone District, Honorable Greg G. Gasataya. Negroes Oriental, First District, Honorable Jocelyn C. Lim Caichong. Second District, Honorable Manuel T. Sagarbaria. Third District, Honorable Arnulpo Arnolpo Arni A. Tebes Jr. Party list representatives. One ang edukasyon, una ang edukasyon, Honorable Salvador B. Belaro Jr. One Care, First Consumer Alliance for Rural Energy Incorporated, Honorable Carlos Roman L. Uy Barreta. One Pacman, One Patriotic Coalition of Marginalized Nationals, Honorable Michael L. Romero Ph.D., Honorable Enrico A. Pineda. A Teacher, Advocacy for Teacher Empowerment Through Action, Cooperation, and Harmony Towards Educational Reforms Incorporated, Honorable Julieta A. R. Cortuna. Aambis Owa, Ang Asosasyon Sang Mangunguma, Ngabisaya Owa Mangunguma Incorporated, Honorable Sharon S. Garini. Aangat Tayo, Honorable Harlin Neil J. Abayon III. Aasenso, Ating Agapay Central Samahan ngang mga obrero incorporated, Honorable Teodoro Ted G. Montoro. Abanglingkod, Abanglingkod Incorporated, Honorable Joseph Stephen S. Paduano. Abono, Abono Party List, Honorable Conrado M. Estrella III, Honorable Vini Nola A. Ortega. ABS, Arts, Business, and Science Professionals, Honorable Eugene Michael B. De Vera. ACT Teachers, ACT Teachers Party List, Honorable Antonio El Tinio, Honorable Franz L. Castro. ACT OFW, ACT Overseas Filipino Workers Coalition of Organizations, Honorable Aneseto John D. Bertis III. AGAP, Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines, Honorable Rico B. Heron. Agbyag, Agbyag Timpuyog Ilocano Incorporated, Honorable Michelle M. Antonio. Agree, Agree Agra na reforma para sa magsasakan ng Pilipinas movement, Honorable Delpin Gan Lee, Honorable Orestes T. Salon. Akbayan, Akbayan Citizens Action Party, Honorable Tom S. Bilyarin. Ako Bicol, Ako Bicol Political Party, Honorable Rodel M. Batokabe. Honorable Alfredo A. Garbin Jr., Honorable Christopher S. Co. Alona, Alliance of Organizations, Networks, and Associations of the Philippines Incorporated, Honorable Anna Marie Villarazas Juárez. Amin, Anak Mindanao Party List, Honorable City Gialla A. Torabin Hataman, Honorable Mahmoud D. Mending Jr. Anwaray, Honorable Victoria Isabel G. Noel. Anak IP, Ang National Anak IP, Ang National Coalition of Indigenous Peoples Action Na Incorporated, Honorable Josete Pangani Ivan Jr. CPA LLB. Anak Pawis, Honorable Ariel Kaayik B. Casilaw. Ang Kabuhayan, Honorable Denis C. Laogan. Ankla, Ang Partido ng mga Pilipino-Marino Incorporated, Honorable Jesulito A. Manalo. Bayan Muna, Honorable Carlos Isagani T. Sarate. BH, Bago Generasyon, Honorable Bernardet BH Herrera D. Buhy, Buhy Hayaang Yumabong, Honorable Mariano Michael M. Belarde Jr., Honorable Jose L. Atienza Jr. Butil, Butil Farmers Party, Honorable Cecilia Leonila B. Chávez. Sibak, Citizens Battle Against Corruption, Honorable Sherwin N. Tugna. CoopNatto, Cooperative Natto Network Party, Honorable Antoni M. Bravo PhD, Honorable Sabinyano S. Canama. Diwa, Democratic Independent Workers Association Incorporated, Honorable Emilin Aglipay Bilyar. Gabriela, Gabriela Women's Party, Honorable Emmy A. de Jesús, Honorable Arlin D. Brosas. Kabataan, Kabataan Partelist, Honorable Sara Jane I. Elago. Kabayan, Kabalikat ng Mamamayan, Honorable H. Harry L. Roque Jr., Honorable Ron P. Salo. Calinga, Advocacy for Social Empowerment and Nation Building Through Ising Poverty Incorporated, Honorable Abigail Fay C. Feriol Pascual. Kusug Tausug, Honorable Sherni Abu Bakar Tan. LPGMA, LPG Marketers Association Incorporated, Honorable Annel U.T. Magdalo, Magdalo Para sa Pilipino, Honorable Gary C. Alejano. Manila Teachers, Manila Teachers Savings and Loan Association Incorporated, Honorable Bilhilio S. Lacson. Mata, Ang Matay Alagaan, Honorable Tricia Nicole Q. Velasco Caterra. PBA, Pwersa ng Bayaning Athleta, Honorable Mark Aaron H. Sambor. Honorable Jericho Jonas B. Nograles. Sagip, Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervation on Poverty, Honorable Rodante D. Marcoletta. Senior Citizens Coalition of Associations of Senior Citizens in the Philippines, Honorable Francisco G. Datol Jr., Honorable Milagros Aquino Magcaysay. SVP, Servicio Sabayan Party, Honorable Ricardo RJT Belmonte Jr. TUCP, Trade Union Congress Party, Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza. Yakap, You Against Corruption and Poverty, Honorable Benhar B. López Jr. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 264 members responded to the call. There being 264 members who responded to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. The Honorable Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a certificate of finality issued by the Commission on Elections and Bank, relative to its resolution promulgated on May 3, 2017, recognizing the legitimate nominees and declaring them as the representatives of the Coalition of Association of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Incorporated. Pursuant to Section 6, role, two of the roles of the House, I move that the Honorable Speaker administer the oath of affirmation to Mr. Francisco G. Datol Jr. and Madam Milagros Aquino Magcaysay in open session. As the duly elected representatives of the senior citizens partelists and that members of their immediate families be allowed to accompany them.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Honorable Francisco Datol Jr. and Honorable Milagros Aquino Magcaysay are invited to ascend the restroom for their oath-taking as the representatives of the Coalition of Association of Senior Citizens in the Philippines. We also invite their immediate families to witness the same. May I request all the members of the House to stand. Please raise your right hands and recite your oaths before me.
I, Milagros Aquino Magcaysay, of 25 Peralan Street, Barangay Iri Soor, San Juan de Ullion, having been elected as representative, Coalition of the Ascension of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Incorporated, senior citizens partelists, hereby solemnly swear that I will bear and faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities the duties of my present position and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will bear tribute and allegiance to the same, and that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines, and that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily without mental hesitation or purpose of evasion. So help me God.
The session is suspended for a few minutes to allow the other members of the House to meet Honorable Datol and Honorable Magcaysay. Congratulations. The session is resumed. The Honorable Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1104 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and the contents of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 1104 is now in order.
House Resolution Number 1104, Resolution informing the Senate that a quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions, resolved as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives, that the Senate be informed that a quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions, adopted, signed Rodolfo C. Parias, Majority Leader, and Danilo I. Suarez, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 1104.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1104. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 1104 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution Number 1105 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 1105 is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title and text of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 1105, Resolution informing His Excellency Rodrigo Rova Duterte, President of the Republic of the Philippines, that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions, resolved as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives, that His Excellency Rodrigo Rova Duterte, President of the Republic of the Philippines, be informed that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions, adopted, signed Rodolfo C. Parias, Majority Leader, and Danilo I. Suarez, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 1105.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1105. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 1105 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 11 and that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none.
Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 11 is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title and text of the resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 11, Concurrent Resolution providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold the joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Resolved by the House of Representatives, the Senate concurring, that both Houses of Congress of the Republic of the Philippines hold a joint session on Monday, July 24, year 2017, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon at the session hall of the House of Representatives to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Signed, Rodolfo C. Parias, Majority Leader, and Danilo I. Suarez, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Concurrent Resolution Number 11.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 11. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Concurrent Resolution Number 11 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the House Secretariat time to transmit the Senate to the Senate the copies of the resolution we have just adopted, and until we have received messages from the Senate, I move for the suspension of our session.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended. The session is resumed. The House Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of messages from the Senate. I move for the consideration of the same.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of messages from the Senate is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the messages from the Senate.
Messages from the Senate. Senate Resolution Number 422 entitled, "Informing the House of Representatives that a quorum is present in the Senate and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its function for the second regular session of the 17th Congress of the Philippines."
To the Archives.
Senate Resolution Number 423, Resolution informing His Excellency, the President of the Philippines, that a quorum is present in the Senate and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the second regular session of the 17th Congress of the Philippines.
To the Archives.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, Concurrent Resolution creating a joint committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress, now convened for its second regular session of the 17th Congress of the Philippines, is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
To the calendar of business for today.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6 and that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6 is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the resolution.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, Concurrent Resolution creating a joint committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress, now convened for its second regular session of the 17th Congress of the Philippines, is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses. Resolved by the Senate, the House of Representatives of the Philippines concurring, that a joint committee of both Houses, Congress be created, composed of 10 members, five to be appointed by the President of the Senate and five to be appointed by the Speaker of the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress, now convened for its second regular session of the 17th Congress of the Philippines, is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, authorizing the creation of a joint committee of both Houses to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress is convened and ready to hear his message on the part of the House, I move that all Deputy Speakers be appointed to the joint committee.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. All the Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives are hereby appointed to the joint committee and are requested to immediately discharge their responsibility.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the members of the joint committee time to perform their assigned task, and until the House counterpart is ready to report back their accomplishment to this House, I move that we suspend our session for a few minutes.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is suspended. The session is resumed. The Honorable Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we have received a report from the Notification Committee that the President has been informed that Congress will convene in joint session at 4:00 this afternoon to hear his State of the Nation address. Mr. Speaker, I wish to remind my colleagues here to be here at 3:00 this afternoon, one hour before the opening of the session.
The remarks of the Majority Leader are duly noted.
Mr. Speaker, before I move to adjourn upon direction of the Speaker, he wishes also to thank and commend our deputy speakers and the members of the Rules Committee headed by Senior Deputy Majority Leader Rimpi Bondo, the our colleagues from the minority headed by Minority Leader Dani Suarez and Senior Deputy Minority Leader Lito Achenza, our colleagues from the Group of Independents for their partnership in steering the proceedings of this body. On behalf of the Speaker, he also wishes to thank our contingents to the Commission appointments headed by Representative Roni Zamora and to the House of Representatives Electoral Tribunal headed by Representative George Almonte. Before that, Mr. Speaker, I also, with the permission of the Speaker, I wish to acknowledge the presence of my 95-year-old mother in the session hall as a representative of all our mothers. On behalf of my colleagues, to all our mothers and fathers, we love and thank you so much for raising us so well that our respective districts and sectors have chosen us, elected us to represent them in this august halls of the Congress. On that note, Mr. Speaker, I move that we now adjourn the regular session until 4:00 today to hear the State of the Nation address of the President.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow.
We adjourn until 4:00 tomorrow afternoon, Tuesday.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is adjourned until 4:00 tomorrow afternoon. Thank you, thank you.